Enter the meeting. Followed by a town. Enter your participant ID, followed by a town. Please enter the meeting password, followed by a town. You are in the meeting now. Mayor. Participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Okay. We've got feedback someone. No, I turned it off.
I turned my mic on.
Is that better?
Oh, maybe if I.
Maybe just turn your, everybody else's mic off. Okay, try it now. I think I've muted a few people that were giving feedback. Oh, I think I muted you guys. Oh, stupid. I messed up.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can't hear you anymore.
Still talking?
Mayor, I'm not sure if you're trying to talk because obviously I can't see because of the mask, but if you're trying to talk, we can't hear you.
The mayor is on mute.
Right, he has to unmute himself.
Microphone, I'm sorry. Okay, so my microphone on my computer is on. But now we're getting feedback all over the place. Okay, in the past, I've turned my microphone on my laptop off and I've used the microphone on the desk and it's worked okay. Counselor Hart, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you now. If you were speaking before, I didn't, but I hear you now.
Okay, then I have to have my computer microphone turned on. And we've got horrible feedback. We'll see if that makes things better.
Mayor, have you guys been able to figure out the microphone? Just wondering.
Well, so we're running into problems, Jackie, with the computer microphone. Nobody can hear me if I don't have my computer mic on. But with my desktop mic, everybody hears feedback.
And, and you're, the one, the microphones at your desk aren't working still, right?
No, they are working now.
Okay, then, um, if your microphones are all on, you guys can use the phone that's there. Elizabeth probably already has it running and then put the microphone by the speaker of the phone.
Yeah, I did that, but that's what's causing feedback. When we give Why do we have to have the microphone by the speaker?
You can.
Can we turn the microphone? I just disconnected. See if you can.
Okay. So we've disconnected the phone over here.
Okay.
What's the next step, Jackie?
I can't see. We can hear you just find this way if everybody. I don't know, can everybody else hear their us?
Well, I'm the only one with a functioning laptop. The other council members don't, either don't have it along or it needs a password update. Jameson, yours is working fine? Okay, so it'd be nice if we could hear it over the speakers of the room so that Counselor Farmer and Counselor Hicks could hear.
Can you turn on your speakers as well? Turn on yours and that will get it. Okay, so now my microphone, my microphone.
And I'll just turn the volume up as loud as possible on here.
If you guys can use the phone just for the audio and just put it on mute, then you can do it that way.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I think it sounded like Elizabeth tried to do that already.
Right.
Yeah, it's too echoey. I'm gonna turn the mics off. Completely.
Okay, then what's that do for Mr. Farmer, Mr. Hicks?
Can you hear it all?
I can't hear anything.
Let me get back on my phone.
Put it over here.
Okay, we're still getting a lot of feedback.
I don't know what else to do.
And I don't either. Let's give the roll call a try and see if we can go down the list and see how we can make that work. If we have to make some adjustments, we will do that down the course, but Jackie, why don't you go ahead and do the roll call and we'll see who's here and we'll see how the sound works on this end, all right?
Great. I lost my pen. Um, Mayor Borzner?
I'm here.
Counselor Beeler?
I am here.
Counselor Farmer?
Here.
Counselor Ripley?
Where'd she go? She was here.
Counselor Ripley? Was here, so we will catch her in a little bit. Deputy Mayor Asucci?
Excused.
Counselor Hicks?
I'm here.
Counselor Hart?
Here.
City Manager Alba?
Here.
City Clerk Rendaria, I am here. Interim Finance and Admin Services Director Horner?
Here.
Fire Chief Anderson?
Excused.
Police Chief Escalera?
Excused.
Here.
Public Works Director Fisher?
I'm here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jackie. Can we scroll up on the agenda a little bit? Very good. All right, active agenda. First item, item A, business hours, city buildings. Ms. Alba.
Well, if I could pull up the agenda, I would be doing great.
Again, we ask for everyone's patience as we're struggling with technical issues.
Mayor, whenever Elizabeth is ready, we'll speak. Can you mute your microphone?
I will do that, yes.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Just get out of your way.
Thank you. So we brought forward different hours for different buildings and you can see those on your screen. We're getting such horrible feedbacks over here. Um, I was just gonna say, is there any questions on the hours or any comments?
There's map backfeed.
Yeah. So what do we want to do?
Mr. Mayor, I'm moving, cancel the meeting.
Let us try one more thing here.
Can you mute, um, that, is that phone muted?
Well, that's what we're trying here. Ms. Alba's trying to mute her phone.
I'm on mute currently.
And that's muted. So what's giving us trouble is the microphones here at the council chambers.
Okay, maybe, do you want to try turning them off and just leaving?
Okay, oh, they're off now?
Yeah, they're off.
Okay. Okay, so the system has been turned off. I apologize. I didn't realize she had done that. So I think our phones and computers are fighting each other. So what needs to happen is every microphone needs to be turned off unless you're the one talking. Yours is muted. Okay. Okay.
Still getting weird feedback.
Yeah, there's a delay between what I'm saying and what I, when I can hear it over on that side. So that's what's causing the headache.
What if, um, wait, I don't know. I don't have this portion. Are they hearing feedback too, or is it just us?
Uh, Ms. Hart, since I see you sitting there, are you hearing feedback on your?
Yes, I'm hearing your feedback.
Okay, so it is.
It's, it's at your end.
Oh, I don't hear a feedback on you now.
Okay, what's changed? Because I'm not hearing it either.
Never happen, don't do anything, just leave it that way.
Just leave it alone.
I think Mr. Hicks turned the volume down as low as he possibly could and still hear anything at all.
I don't hear any feedback now.
I think what happens is my microphone is picking up whatever else is, uh, is going on.
All right, it sounds great though, right now.
Quick, let's go through that.
Can you hear mine? So he's not gonna hear.
But you're gonna be, can you hear what Elizabeth is saying as she's standing here talking?
When she's standing here talking.
Okay.
When she's standing here talking, not what's talking over there.
Not what she's talking right here?
I can stand right here and talk.
It makes no difference, but it's just, I'm not gonna hear comments. Uh, I, I think I'll just excuse myself.
But we don't want that to happen.
No, no, no. Mr. Farmer, I can hear you fine. And if Elizabeth is speaking up, I can hear her. Can, and you're in the room, correct?
Yes, she is with us at chambers.
So.
Can you hear her? Could you hear everything she just said?
I can't hear either.
Oh, he can't even.
Okay, so you couldn't hear Julia talking just now?
I could hear Julia, but I could not.
Okay.
I, I could hear noise.
But How'd she come closer? Think we can solve it.
Let's.
Just doing our best shot.
Are you willing to give it a try, Mike?
I'm willing to give it a try.
Okay.
So on this Boy, if it gets really bad, a member could go into the back room and turn on the phone back there and listen from there. I know it's horrible, but you know, if you want to get through this one.
Right. Let's try it this way. Um, the city manager is gonna be in the middle of the room, um, behind the dais here, so we can hear and I've got my volume turned up full blast. Mr. Hicks has his down, so there's not feedback. And when I'm not are you gonna have your microphone open? Okay, so I'll turn mine off when I'm not talking and we're gonna go with that. All right. Okay.
I'm muted.
No. So it's There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is a comedy.
Boy, do I look impersonated. Yeah.
So can, can someone talk so we can see if we can get this volume issue figured out?
I can see you and I can hear you with no problems right now.
Same here.
Okay, now try it.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we heard you. Could you hear her mic?
I could hear noise. Can you turn the mics back on? I just have one phone running, so.
I'm not sure how that would work. Is, because I don't, I don't know, I don't know what the phone part does.
I can leave with mine so that I can turn myself, like, I can just go out there.
Call Zoom on this one and see if that and have all those off, thank you.
Yeah, but then the mayor needs to be on.
Once these microphones are working, I turn off the microphone and the volume.
Okay.
As long as they're coming over to speakers, I don't need to have any volume on. I don't need to have my mic.
I want to get the sound system on.
All right, we're gonna try one more time to get this right. Please bear with us.
That being done. Can we be heard? Um, again, Ms. Hart, you're on the top of my screen. Did you hear us at all?
Yes.
Yes, brilliant, all right. It looks like we're in business. Now, Ms. Alba, you are up with the first item on the agenda.
Thank you. Wow, that's like taking a deep breath. And then holding it. So, um, on the screen, you'll see the hours operations that are being proposed. Um, these have actually went through, um, each of the department heads. Um, we are making no changes at City Hall on the finance side. Um, at the community development side, we are actually going back to the hours that we've had for probably the last 10 or 15 years where we're closed during lunch. Um, that side of the office doesn't have as much, um, lunchtime traffic and they also don't have as many counter staff to cover lunches. So oftentimes they have to cook anyway, so we're making that recommendation. Long Justice Center, the police department, Monday through Friday, eight thirty to four. And then, uh, Long Justice Center, the court, nine AM to noon and one to four, Monday through Thursday. And the community center, ten to noon and one to four, and then it'll be extended evening hours seasonally and I'll just depend on what they have going on. So I will entertain any questions if there are questions.
All right, so go down the list and give everyone an opportunity to ask any questions you may have. First opportunity is going to go to Mr. Beeler.
The only question I have that comes up all the time is, I know it's hard to get everybody out for lunch, but a lot of people plan on their lunch to come in there and pay their electrical bill or they try to pay their court fees. Is, this kind of takes away that time that they're available to do it and not leave work. Have we, uh, thought about that or is the flow of people that low that it doesn't happen?
So on the finance side where the utilities are paid, we are not closing during lunch. It would only be on the building permit side.
Right, next person will be
Yeah, no question.
Okay. Ms. Hart?
Um, I was just follow up on, uh, Mr. Beeler's, uh, comment regarding the court. The closure during the, the twelve to one, people can still drop off their, their payments for their, uh, court tickets and so forth, can't they? Like, like at City? Like at City Hall, okay. Okay.
And there's also, uh, kiosks out there if they come in and they need to, you know, like if they forgot an envelope or they forgot their ticket, they can write all their information down and drop that in boxes with their payment.
So there is, there is an option, uh, during the lunch, lunch closure.
Correct, and the police department side will still be open, so the lobby will be open.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Farmer? Question regarding the community center. If there's programs run early in the morning, does that give you enough time to shut the program down, empty the building? That would be, that would be quite a concern.
And if you don't mind, I would like Wendy to go ahead and address that as half the jury. So I have a summary there and I think we need to have both of these microphones off. Sorry, um, that was my concern as well. But I think that as long as we either My concern was, I'm going to be filling time between City Hall and the community center. Just for a little bit of time for now while the COVID testing is happening. But I didn't want to say that we're gonna be open and I wouldn't be able to get from City Hall to the community center as well. Um, but if there are programs running, I can always issue an instructor key and have the building open whenever that instructor feels wrong, which of course sacrifices and having a second floor. So, but, um, that is pretty much that for now. Um, and it is seasonally adjusted, so when we can have a little staff or, um, an additional resource with us, we would be able to be open in the morning. Uh, but because we need to fill in time between two buildings, I kind of need sometimes to be able to get work done in one area and then move on to the next, if that makes sense.
Yeah, are you the only staff in the building right now?
Right now, yes.
Okay.
And next person will be Ms. Ripley. Have you been looking up? It appears so. I don't have any questions. So.
So if council is agreeable, we'll, we'll come to the next meeting with the ordinance with these hours in it. Um, and then we officially adopt it.
No objection to that? I hear no objection. Let's move that forward, absolutely. Next item on our agenda. Click on that screen again. Don't have paper agenda in front of me, so.
It's the Pro Plan.
Okay, thank you. Next item, on there is the Pro Plan and we have a presentation and the city manager.
So again, I'm going to turn this over to Jameson and Wen. Wen has done the, um, most work on it, in fact, all the work on it, so I will let her go forward. That should be done. So why are we developing a park recreation and open space plan? I'm going to call it the Pro Plan on some continuing forest and my slideshow is not working out this well. Oh, is it all of this? Yeah, this is me. Okay. That is okay. All right, so the park recreation open base plan, I'm going to call it Pro, from that one, is an additional component to the city's comprehensive plan. Um, so the Pro Plan creates a framework that allows the city to respond to new opportunities as they arise and to ensure that parks, facilities and recreation programs and by its presence, employees and visitors now and into the
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we don't have a presentation on our, oh, there, there we go.
And also, could she maybe speak up just a little bit, please?
Hold your mic, look for two years, there you go. Sorry about that.
Just about. Try it again.
Hello?
Okay, just, just it's in that area, but I, you get a little feedback there if you go too loud. I'm sorry, but go ahead.
I'll give it in my record. Um, so the plan is needed in order to extend capital improvement fund for the parks. Um, it also would make us eligible for many granting opportunities, specifically the Washington, um, Recreation and Conservation Office. It, we've had a few different programs, those are the last programs. Park facility acquisition development goes through that system before and to be eligible for the plan would be great. So let's just jump into it. Um, the Pro Plan has seven chapters total. The first chapter gives an introduction to our mission, our vision, and establishes the plan's objectives, which is providing a guide to setting standards and policies, maintaining and expanding the park system. Chapter two is a quick overview of our community settings, talks about climate, wildlife, great history, geographic data and analysis of economic conditions. Chapter three is all about the parks and facilities. This slide on table. Um, this slide shows table three, special ones, which inventory of park lands and rest facilities that sign size maintain. The park inventory chapter also includes amenities in each park and conditions of each park. Chapter four takes a look at the needs expressed through the community survey and the community conversation. These needs are flame renovation, improvement to existing facilities. These needs are slimmer renovations, improvements to existing facilities, and expansion of biking and walking trails or parks. More programming from the recreation division was also a consistent need identified through the community survey and community conversation, and I want to share some good news. We're going to wrap. So in November, the Parks Recreation Program. Those two programs were the summer experiences in Richmond for kids, great for funding. Led us through the Association of Washington Police, Washington Parks and Recreation Association, and the OTSI, and I'm really excited to announce that we received the funds. So we will be running a summer day camp program for eight weeks of summer. So that's just starting the ball rolling on getting our recreation program back in multiple. Chapter four also takes a look at capital improvement, which is what we brought to town for discretion. This list was formed through informal conversations with pregnant employees, recommendations identified by the community, and professional recommendations. Chapter four also identifies granting opportunities that the city could take advantage of to help with capital improvement. Chapter five lays out goals, policies, and objectives for expanding and continuing maintaining the park system. The administrative policies are listed within the section of the plan we're writing in the city's comprehensive plan. Recreation service goals were written based on community survey needs and professional recommendations and others that failed the park's operation. And you can see the goals are listed out with objectives under these. And then chapter six is all about public participation, so the public did participate in creating those plans and listed all the ways that we reached out to the community. Through the community survey, needs were identified, recommendations for improvement for kids, and lots and lots of information about Sunside and what it means. Chapter seven is a year. Quick read, half of the demands and needs that were talked about in chapter four. It is also then informed by community survey data. And it also includes industry standards from the National Park and Recreation Association, which it makes the suggestion that the most important county act to that suggestion is park and recreation agencies are as diverse as the communities that they serve, and what works well for one agency may not be for every agency. So with that, I want to have discussions with people who understand Sunside the best to kind of talk about capital improvements that could be made to our park system. So this is a long list of recommendations that were prioritized by me. However, that was not the most recent presentation.
The one that you're seeing online is not the most recent presentation? It's very famous.
Oh, is it saying that? Oh, the one you're seeing online is the most recent presentation, the one that we're seeing here in council chambers or not. So allow me a moment to tap out the table that has been corrected in the online presentation. And so as you can see in the table, it is identified by what has already been funded in the general fund this year. You don't have to make any decisions about that. The things that we need to make decisions about are when things will happen. So the things that are prioritized with timing would then... I want you to look at it and basically tell me, yes, we're going to start with city winning parks or up those parks. But I really would like to have this conversation because if you don't have it, I don't know. I won't know what the council would like to do. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, let's start with some questions, and we're going to give you a chance. Yeah, we're going to start with Mr. Farmer.
I'm really glad to see this. I think over the last several years, I think our program has deteriorated. Not necessarily this fall, it's COVID and a whole bunch of things. I'm glad to see this coming. As a member of the city council, I think it's very important that we support this program. And support it means funding it. We want our kids to strive and do well in the community, and we need to give them opportunities to be themselves and to be with other kids. And I think that this is a good way of doing it. I think there's some problem with the maintenance of the parks. I do the water thing in front of the community center.
Who's last class? Last class.
Yeah, it was great when it was working. I don't know how many years it had of the work, but it was great and had a lot of participation, a lot of kids enjoyed it. So I think these are things that we as a council need to look at. I think we need to look at putting our money where our mouths are and fund these things. And I'm glad to see this brought forward to us.
Excuse me. Thank you, sir. Ms. Hart.
Well, I'm excited to see that we have a list of actual progress of things that we can move ahead on, things that maybe we can be funding this year. Also, a plan to go moving forward. A couple of the things on there are things I think that the council has been wanting to do for quite a little while. For one reason or another, we haven't been able to. But I think that we're in a better position now to be moving ahead with the parks programs. And I think it's a... I'm very pleased to see this improvement list. The other thing is, I would like to say, as far as the splash pad out there at South Hill Park, I think we've gotten to use it at least a few times every summer. Not maybe as often as we'd like to, but particularly not in the past year. But I think it's a good thing. I like the idea of the concession park concession stand at the pool. I think that would be a nice amenity there. So, but well done on putting these things together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Pretty much I told my concerns that say that someone else has, you know, it's a good job and I see what is happening. Just pull what we can.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Beeler.
It's just nice to see a little action down there at Parks and Recreation. I'm getting excited about seeing some things come about this year. Great work, and I'm behind this. Thank you.
Right, myself too. I'd like to echo my colleagues. Congratulations on the funding for the day camp program. I'm excited to hear that. I think that's a very positive thing. You know, as far as the list, I took a look at that this morning. And I filled it out first thing this morning, and I couldn't submit it. I did submit it later this afternoon when the submit button magically appeared, so that was cool. But I will tell you, the hardest part about that is I want to fund all of them, and I want to fund all of them right now. And so my choices, I think, were a little bit arbitrary. There were certain things that I liked a lot, but I think they all matter, and we need to make progress on those. I think the community is behind it. The kinds of things that I hear from members of the community is they really want recreation programs for their kids. I honestly believe that programs for kids and youth is a quality of life thing. It's like a good functioning pool. It's like community festivals and farmer markets and that sort of thing. It's a quality of life issue, and that needs to be supported. If we look at it to make us revenues, I don't think that's going to happen. But when we have the opportunity to develop these programs, I think we need to take that opportunity and do as much as we can with it. So I appreciate the list. I appreciate the opportunity to think that through. I don't know how many people actually turned in the list and submitted the form, but I know I did. So you got mine to work with at the very least. I don't know if that means I get priority or not, but I commend you on that, so thank you for that.
If council has a mind, Wen has a drive home. If we could excuse her from our meeting.
If there's no objection, then you are excused. Thank you for your work.
And also, she didn't say how much money she got. She got a over $40,000 grant for this day camp program.
Awesome.
To the staff, and maybe go on a couple of features. I'm excited. Thank you very much, officer.
And then I just wanted to add one more point. If you can, submit those surveys that agree. Otherwise, you can see on here that she did highlight the things that were more important to her and put them in order and importance there. And if you don't, if we don't get it back, we'll just keep them in that order, which they'll just go into the, they'll be approved in the Pro Plan, which will go into the Comp Plan, which will allow us to use our excess, our excess tax money to start funding these. So that's why it's coming back at council before the end of the month. When it comes back, that's why we need to implement it before the end of the month.
All right, well, I'm sure you're able to fill it out. You have to hear. I'll be able to fill it in online if you have computer password issues, which means play these computers. Go ahead, fill in the paper one that you got. That will also work, so. All right, thank you. Anything else for the Parks and Recreation? None. Let's move on to personnel policy. I am C. The manager.
So I'm going to turn this over, actually, to Jamison. She has done all the hard work on it, and I want her to take the lead. And this one, it was not particularly hard work. But as we have briefly discussed in some previous council meetings, I would like to propose removal of the Personnel Policy Manual from the Municipal Code. This would allow for easier updating to keep it in line with new laws and regulations as they come about and make it more easy to make changes as needed. And I'm not saying that those changes would be made without the council's approval. I would rather have it approved by a resolution so that it does not have to be codified, which takes extra time and money, and it just takes a lot of extra work to do it that way. So what we would like to do is pull it back into an administrative policy that is updated on a regular basis, brought forth to council under a resolution to approve those changes as they come. So at this point, what we want to do is just pull it out, not make any changes, just have you pass an ordinance saying that we're going to remove it from the code and then pass it as a resolution. And then at that point, we can start going forward and actually working through it section by section.
Okay, so if everybody didn't quite pick up on that, our current personnel policy is a part of Sunside Municipal Code, which makes it law. And that's not terribly normal for personnel policy. And there's a list of reasons, and I'm fairly sure that our city manager could explain all of that to you at your leisure if you want to hear all the details. But what that means is actually that it's very difficult to change it because we've got to change the law every time we want to change personnel policy. So the recommendation here is to take it out of municipal code and just put it in as a policy handbook. That can be changed by resolution instead of ordinance. So that's a summary of what she already said, to make sure that we understand the same thing, that I understand the same thing as she said. So with that, we give opportunity for folks to ask questions. We're going to start with Mr. Beeler.
That's pretty self-explanatory. Thank you. I got no questions or comments.
Right, Ms. Farmer.
I think it's probably the best way to go.
Yes, no questions go. And Ms. Hart.
I think I'm muted. Am I muted? Can you hear me?
No, you're fine. We can hear you.
Okay, sorry. I think this is a... To have it in a manual as opposed to a law, it makes a lot of sense, especially when you do have those updates and various things that just need to be changed periodically as laws change and those kinds of things. So I think this is a really good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, and I tend to agree with this. As I looked at this over the weekend and seen the length and the breadth of our personnel policies, and seen that each one of these things, any kind that we want to change it, is going to require a change in state ordinance. It seems to be a cumbersome way to keep our personnel policy updated and going to whatever changes in state law by habit. So it is a logical way to go. So it sounds as if that is the desire of council, that he moved that forward.
Excellent. We will bring forth a resolution and an ordinance to let the area have that.
But keeping in mind that we do have to vote to take it out of the law.
Yes, that's perfect.
Before we can make a policy, so. Right. Next item, item D, compensation study. That's the manager.
And again, Jamison did the hard work on this one, and that's one last month's hard work, so I will let her take the lead.
And I want to share my review, but I'm having a little trouble here. So just bear with me for one second.
Something there, even.
Okay. Let me see here. Sorry, just a minute.
Are you going to share that, Jamison, or you share together?
I am going to share it. Just can we get you a second here? Okay, hopefully you are seeing what I see, which is the compensation study. All right, I had to get another one that has notes here. All right, so just before we get real deep into this, I want to kind of give you a little review.
That's an interruption, Ms. Farmer. Our screen has changed here. Now we're seeing something about lunch closures at the municipal court.
No?
Now you're back.
Comprehensive study.
Interesting. Okay. There we go. I think it's not letting me share from a document, but I can remind you of the part.
Pretty strong by my screen.
Yeah, I think I shared the wrong thing. Instead of the PowerPoint, I shared the PDF. So I apologize.
One of the things that we could learn from this evening's meeting is that we can all be easily and quickly helped by technology.
Yes, for sure. Okay, what can you guys see at home now?
What I'm seeing on my screen is what we have there plus your notes.
Plus my notes, okay, that's fine. I don't mind if you see my notes. I just don't want them to take up the whole page. All right, so my notes, basically, are just, before I get started, I wanted to give you a little bit of background. When I first took this to the gym, the insurance manager asked me to take on this project along with some other human resources type projects that she wanted to have done. She said that the city has a long-term issue with pay equity, and she wanted to make sure that staff felt valued and that they were being treated carefully. She was worried that that was not the case, and she's been here for several years. So she kind of asked me to come in with set of fresh eyes and take a look at the issue. So I took the project on from two different angles. First, I wanted to talk to people and figure out, is this the case? Is this really how people are feeling? In regards to that, it was real quick to find out that, yes. Just in the process of going around and meeting people and talking to them about working for the city of Sunside, it very quickly came up, and not to say that people don't love their jobs and love to work here, but it very quickly came up that they did not feel that some of the compensation was fair. In fact, the most surprising thing was, a lot of people were more concerned about other people than themselves. There were people that said, well, even when they worked in a different department, this department hasn't had as many raises. You know, my spouse or my friend works in this department. You know, my spouse or my friend works in this department, and I know that I've gotten more money, more raises than they have. So that was a note to me, okay, there's definitely competition going on. There's definitely people that are feeling dis satisfied with the way compensation is working. So given that information, I went to the data, which is what I like to do, and went and took a good look. And I started by doing some research into how the cities have compensated in the past, um, or past trends and things like that. And then I went and did a comparison to other cities statewide to sort of see where we, where we come up. So, let's look one here. Okay, so this, again, why is, why is this important? So the reason it's important is, on top of being a government job where we don't often have the ability to pay bonuses and things like that, government work also just doesn't have the pull that it used to as far as hiring people. Unfortunately, recruitment has gotten harder over the years. Um, government work used to be high value with great benefits, and, um, it really hasn't kept up with pay in a lot of other industries. Um, the other reason it's important is because we don't want employee turnover. We want to correct these issues with our employee culture. So it's important to us that we make sure that the morale is good, which I think honestly, most people have great feelings about where they work. They're proud to work for Sunnyside, but they're not, they're not denying that there are issues. Um, so the next thing, in this environment, we're also dealing with what the news is calling the great recognition. So in addition to it already being difficult to hire government employees for us, we have jobs that have been in open recruitment for months. Um, for instance, the building officials that we've been trying to hire. So in addition to that, there's also a number of people just quitting their jobs and saying, eh, I'm going to go do something else. So the job market is hot, everyone is trying to hire. There is high competition for open positions. Um, so that points us to the importance of recruitment, having successful recruitment, and then retaining the employees that we do recruit. Um, historically, the city of Sunnyside appears to have mostly done promotion from within, which I think is excellent. You have people who work in your culture, who know their job, that you can promote up into leadership positions. And then you go outside for more of the frontline staff positions. Um, the problem is we're not as competitive in some of those salary areas. Um, and when we get further in, you'll see what I'm talking about here. Um, and then the last thing, which to me, as a finance person, is really important. Um, planning for the future. One of the problems with not keeping salaries competitive is that we don't then maintain a budget that is capable of hiring qualified staff. And so you can have great employees that have worked someplace for thirty-five years, and they're perfectly happy at the salary level that they are. But if you're underpaying them, the day that they retire, all of a sudden you have a huge hole in your budget where you can't hire the next qualified person. And so it is, it is in everyone's best interest to make sure that salaries maintain competitiveness, but also are economically, you know, important. Um, and that's part of working for a government agency. So we'll get into defining what a fair wage is. So as I was talking about this, pretty much two things that I looked at. Um, is equity and employee pay. So the things that influence equity are all internal things. How employees feel about how they're being paid. And so these are based on things like responsibility level, function, um, how many people do their same job, um, whether or not hierarchies make sense compensation-wise. Does your boss get paid more than you? Will you want to work for a promotion, you know? Um, and then it also, it also has to do with some external things. People talk about their, their jobs. People, even the happiest employees are out there looking at other jobs. They're talking to their friends and family. So they want to know that they're getting paid fairly, that they're, that they are in a successful industry, that, that they're being compensated for the hard work that they're doing. Um, they also talk about organizations and how great they are in hard work. And we want to make sure that Sunnyside is known still as a great place to work. And not all because we're just giving away the part, but because people feel valued as employees of the city of Sunnyside. On the good side of this point, there's the economic factors and the financial considerations. All employees' salaries are paid by both funds. We are required by law to be good beneficiaries of the funds that we receive from the residents of the city of Sunnyside. So we can't give bonuses, we can't pay outrageous rates. Um, we have to make sure that our operation is running as efficiently as possible so that we're not wasting funds. Um, and then the other thing is, we have to pay attention to the job market. Like I said, for planning purposes. Are we maintaining a budget amount that is going to be able to hire qualified staff to step in should we have an opening? Um, so that's kind of the background of what I looked at. Does anybody have any questions at this point? Jump right through this.
Council members, any questions? Any questions back and forth, so go ahead.
Good deal, okay. So this is kind of where I started with my research into the data of pay history. So I looked at the cost of living trends, and there was some really great documentation going all the way back to two thousand and nine. Um, because, as I said, this has been a recurrent issue. Um, there are documents from two thousand and nine that I found where pay equity came up. Um, a gal named Gina Harris was a consultant that came and did a big report that talked about this. So I have data going back that far, um, as far as how, how pay equity is handled. Um, and it was an established problem at that time. And some of the issues that she brought up in her report are still completely valid at this point. So this slide here gives us an overview of the cost of living increases for every separate bargaining unit from two thousand and nine until today. The red bar is the inflation rate. So it's thirty-two percent. That means basically a dollar in two thousand and nine is worth a dollar thirty-two today. So what you could buy for a dollar, I mean, double standard, two thousand and nine, today costs you a dollar thirty-two, okay? So we want to keep up with that because otherwise, basically, our employees are earning less money, right? So across the board, mostly, we are very, very close there, with some being quite ways over and then one being quite a bit under. Um, but the fire department, teachers clerical, teachers public worker, and the supervisors are all right within thirty, thirty-two, um, close to thirty-three percent. So those are very untraced. Our police department and police, and officers and in the police support department are much higher. And I think this is reflective of the market for police. And we all know that there is a social climate out there that is not necessarily, um, encouraging people to go become police officers. And it is every, across the state and across the nation, recruiting police officers is very difficult, which has increased the wage department for them more than it has for others. So what I want to bring your attention to is on the left, which is the non-reps. So this is your leadership, some of your, um, unrepresented administrative assistants, HR, recreation. This room has only had sixteen percent since two thousand and nine. So it's about half of what the inflation rate is. So essentially, this person's dollar is now only worth seventy cents. No, not that, sorry, eighty-five cents. Um, so it's about half. So there is a down where everybody else has maintained their bottom. Um, part of the issue for this is not that it is necessarily ongoing right now, but between two thousand and nine and twenty-sixteen, that person got no cost of living increases at all. So that sets a stage already for them to be far behind the rest of the bargaining groups. Anybody have any questions on this information?
Council, any questions here?
All right.
Okay, carry on.
Okay, so now, we're actually looking at comparing the salaries to other cities in the municipal market. So, um, the Association of Washington Cities provides an annual salary survey where they send out a questionnaire to every city in the state asking for information to come back about salary benefits, working hours, all kinds of stuff. Um, we have access to this with our membership, so it's a great wealth of information for figuring this out. So my methodology for doing this was finding the most comparable cities to the city of Sunnyside in size, in value, um, in employee numbers and revenue. And so the closest match they write for us was Eden Quash, which is in King County. It's a urban area, so it doesn't compare very well. It's a totally different environment. So then we went just to Eastern Washington, and we found the best matches in all, all four areas. So I found the best matches for population, Eastern Ashby, West Ridge, and Ellenburg. The best matches for the number of employees, the number of staff, were Cheney and Spokane Valley. Um, the best valley matches, or assessed value matches were Cheney College Place, Ula and Union Gap. And then the sales tax revenue matches were Airway Heights, Eastern Ashby. So all of these had numbers that were within a small percentage of Sunnyside. Um, and then in addition to that, I went to our local areas because this is actually the people that we're competing with for jobs. So I went to our sort of extended commute areas, so all the way from Ellenburg to Detroit City, and gathered that data. So once I had all the data, um, I found the midpoint, and I averaged it all together, and, um, here it is for you. All right, so just before we get too far, the next four slides in this one are all going to be set up the same way, so I want you to kind of understand what you're looking at here. So the, um, this is for administration clerical positions. The table shows the exact same information as the chart does. But the table shows the numbers, and the orange one is at the lowest, and the dark green is higher, right? So it shows where we are compared to the average of all of our comparables, and then the midpoint of the comparables. And the reason I use both of those is because sometimes you'll have outlined data that will skew your average. So putting that midpoint in there sort of tells you exactly where your average fell. So, um, and then on the right in the bar graph, it just sort of shows it so that it's easier to see the differences between how much we're paying and how much nobody else is paying. So for example, um, if you looked at the city clerk executive assistant line, the second one in from the left, there was fairly even. Um, but then if you look over at the other end, the very far right end, the recreation coordinator site, um, Sunnyside pays quite a bit less than most of the averages in other places. So then if you look at the chart, you'll see that we're, that's orange because Sunnyside's low and everyone agrees. So just to take a quick, I mean, look at this. Aside from a couple of positions on here, you can see that Sunnyside is trending well below, um, one of these other areas. And, and like I said, in some places we're close, like the clerk. Um, in other places we're, we're quite a bit lower. Um, so those are the positions that you would want to look at, change that for. Um, if that's what you want to do. So this is the administration clerical. And are you guys ready for me to move on to the next one? Well, it's your lead, okay. So the next one is building and community development. And this one was pretty straightforward. I mean, um, we're, we're running low in all of these positions, which actually helps explain why we've had trouble recruiting building inspectors. But then if you look at the chart on the right, they're not too far off. Um, but they are, they are lower than the surrounding areas. Okay, next is the fire department. So on this one, you can see like the fire chief position is considerably lower than some of the other areas, whereas the captains and firefighters are a bit higher. Part of that might be because there's not as many, any other full-time professional firefighting, um, cities in our area besides Detroit City and the Applemont, some of the bigger cities. Um, but also, uh, firefighting and police contracts tend to have, um, built-in incentives that don't show necessarily on the bottom line of what salary is. And so for our data, I did go ahead and show this and I knew what they are. And some of the other ones, if I didn't have the data, I wasn't able to use it, but... We have the police department. So, sorry, this one's really... Um, you'll see the same here, where in the, in the green, in the very far left, for sergeants and police officers, we're higher. But for the majority of the other jobs, we are running below the curve. If you look at, this is like the police chief and police commander line. Um, those are, so police officer jobs have been pushed up enough and up by the market. And the, the leadership jobs have been pushed up by the market as well. But we haven't had turnover in those divisions, so sometimes the evaluating that salary gets lost when you're not actually doing recruitment. And then the public works position. So these are pretty much across the board, we are running significantly lower than, than the comparable.
So let's, uh, let's see if council has any questions at this point. This is not a lot of information to digest, and so, uh, council, any questions at this point? I can put it on the list, or if somebody wants to speak up, go right ahead.
I have one. Is it comparable, like, this is their job title, this is their listing, this is our job title, this is their listing, match?
Correct.
Okay.
And when AWC provides the information, they provide, um, like a general category, then they provide job titles, and then they provide a list of, um...
Responsibility.
Yes, and then they, the, the respondent tells them, yes, that's a good match, or no, there's more, you know, the other additional things, or no, there's less. So, um, I went through each.
Council, further questions? See my screen light up? I've seen people jumping up and down in here, you may carry on, Jane Mason.
Okay, all right, I know it's a lot, it's fit, and now it's already seven thirty-eight P M., so I'll try to go fast. Okay, so that's the data of how our wage scales compare. But then there is actual employee pay. And so like I was saying a few minutes ago, with firefighters and police especially, and our public work department actually, there's the, there's the advertised rate, but then there's also these incentives you can get for having different qualifications or pathfinding class or something like that. Um, there's also overtime, which obviously, when we need people to work, we want to pay them, and we have to pay extras to come in and do that. Um, those hourly jobs that are not F L state, or that are F L state exempt, non-exempt, have to get overtime. So that's your frontline job, whereas your administrative executive level staff just gets a flat salary. So, um, what we want to see is something that looks kind of like this. Um, because of hierarchical pay scales, you want to see that your top employees are getting paid a little bit more than the people that they supervise. You want to see that people at the front line have room to grow and move up within your organization, because we don't want to lose good employees. Um, so this one on administration, on, on the surface, it looks really great, okay? But let's flip over to the police department here. So if you take a look at this, starting on the left, there is the commissioned officers who are for blue. And then we have our police support communications and corrections in the middle blue. And then on the far right is the administrative position. So right now, we have one full-time commander, and we have one commander position open. If you look at the average pay for our police sergeant, they are out earning our police commander position right now. And that's not just one, boy, that's the average for five years of all the employees that have held that position. So, asking an employee to take a, a promotion within the city of Sunnyside would effectively be asking them to take a step down in pay. So this is the problem, this is called compression. This is the problem that you have when you didn't, there was no raises, no quotas for all of that executive level and non-represented staff for so long, but these other salaries went up and up. That margin between the different levels, pinned out. So at this point, our, our employees that are eligible for overtime, who are earning, I mean, they're taking outside time and they're coming in to work, but they're earning quite a bit, twelve thousand dollars a year, more than a commander. And, you know, just, just under, so they're just between the commander and the police chief. So if you increase the commander pay, then you'll also have to look at your police chief's pay, because then you're, you're closing that margin as well. So it's kind of a, um, kind of a, uh, snowball effect. So, that's one, and then we have the same issue in the police, or in the fire department, where the battalion chief, which we don't have anymore, we changed it over to the assistant chief, where we have two assistant chief positions. Um, we changed that over so that we won't have the battalion chief anymore, so it'll be a non, or an exempt position, but it'll be, you know, here. Um, so the assistant chief won't be eligible to receive overtime, but the midpoint range that we put in for that position is ninety-eight thousand dollars. And so right now, currently, our fire captains are averaging a hundred and three thousand. So the position that we just created at the midpoint level, they're still running under where our captains are. And then the last one is our public works department. And yes, you can see this one, we don't have that compression issue. Um, but we do know from our previous slides that we looked at, that our public works department seems to be, um, more significantly underpaid than a lot of our other departments. And you can see, um, compared to the other jobs, that they are more underpaid. And I will say that the feedback that I got from, and other employees for the city of Sunnyside often talked about how our public work job was not adequately compensated. And you can see that it is, it's not just, uh, talk, there really is data to track it up. Okay, so then last, we have our finance and administration. Um, so with the finance, my, my position, financial and insurance director, finance supervisor, technicians, and then also here is the human resources, um, court administrator and recreation coordinator. So, they're not, they're really aligned, but they're not supposed to be. And then the building department. And that's, that's pretty much in line. Not to be necessarily super rated each other, but just based on the market. Uh, the lean inspector typically makes more than a coenforcement officer, makes more than a technician.
Let's give council a chance to weigh in on some questions here. Uh, council members, any questions on these last few slides? Hearing none, that's one more.
Okay, cool. All right, well, I only have one thing left, so this is just kind of, this is kind of just sums up, um, what I'm saying about certain groups earning at a higher rate than other groups because of the past history of salaries. So you can see in the last five years, the top five percent of our wage earners have been majority police. In fact, all except one year, I think, three of the police sergeants were the top paid employees. And like I said, I don't hold, and I don't think anyone holds anyone that gives, holds anything against somebody who's working a lot overtime and doing a dangerous job. I'm not saying that they don't deserve that pay, but when you're having police officers surpass their supervisors and their chiefs, um, you can see why there's a feeling of inequity from certain people about whether or not they're, they're valued and they're compensated correctly. So, pretty much, that's it, and we're at the now what. So the plan is, was to look at the data, see what we thought, see if there's something that we need to do. Now that you have the data, um, we need the council to tell us how they would like us to proceed with looking at this. And there are several options. Um, if you agree that it's an issue, we can hire an outside consultant to have them look at, look at our jobs and do an official, real, I mean, I did, I, I did pretty good job, but, you know, this isn't my number one full-time job, I'm not an expert in recruitment and H R as much as I am in finance. So, um, we can hire somebody to come in and do it. We could continue using our data and try to do it from within, because have the finance committee of the council get together and try to work on something. Um, I plan to, just plan to put it into your hands and see what, um, council would like to do regarding the vision.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Orne. Um, I know for my own part, some of this information I knew, but I've never seen it so graphically laid out. Um, some of it is, is due to our financial constraints in the last few years, where we have seriously attempted to and wanted to do some things that have been unable to. And some of it is now able, and we're able to talk about it because of your and this all this work to get our budget cleaned up. So, that, that being said, I want to give council an opportunity, and this particular time, I'm going to go down the list, and just give everybody a chance to speak up. We're going to start with, uh, for a minute, we're going to start with our newest member of council, but I'm going to give you a chance to listen, Mr. Dealer, and I'm going to start with Mr. Hicks.
Say, I've heard this through other terms on the compression and stuff, but there were a few years, it was like, do we fire people, or do we pay the points what we have?
Yeah.
So there's, there's going to be some issues.
Yeah.
How we could handle it, do that one out.
Counsel starts.
Well, I, I appreciate the work that went into this study, uh, knowing that it's going on and figuring out a way to fix it is where we're at now. And I really think that we need to seriously consider how to fix it, because if you're, if you have a police chief who is being, uh, his sergeants are getting paid more than him, and he's supposed to be their supervisor, et cetera, that's, that's no bueno, that's, that's, uh... All of that is wrong, that, that kind of inequity, and we can see it across the board. I mean, in every single department, there's something like that going on. That is just the most graphic, and I really do think we really need to address the compensation inequities. I think that we can't begin to work on retention and recruit, recruitment and retention if we're not paying our people properly. So I really think we need to take a serious look at that, and, uh, maybe we would need to hire somebody outside to come in and say, okay, this is how you could begin to remedy it, because that's what we need to know. How do we begin to remedy this? Thank you.
Um, there's been a lot of things presented tonight that, uh, I think we all need to do some serious reflection on. Um, as for a comment right now, I have none of the fact that, uh, sometimes it's hard to look at, you know, and, and sometimes other things factor into that, but, uh, I, I think it's something that we as a council need, need to look at.
Mr. Dealer.
Yeah, seeing these charts are something, um, I knew we had a lot of problems in like public works, and I've had a lot of complaints from businesses and people building stuff. Then you look at the pay, and we are underpaying everybody over there for what everybody else gets, and, uh, I've been here fourteen years now, and there's very few people there that were there when I was first here. Um, that probably has a lot to do with it. Um, but yeah, I think this is something we really need to look at, but every aspect of it, not just the high pay, we also need to look at the low pay, and how we can do that and budget for that, and, uh, I don't know if we need to bring in a consultant in, but then again, a consultant's going to give you another set of eyes, and they do this for a living, and they make recommendations that we might not come up with. So it's something that we need to, uh, address, that is for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So yeah, I tend to agree with my colleague on this, this is a real problem, and it is discussed at some level every year when we're talking about budget. Um, every time that we talk about, um, contract negotiations, salary negotiations, um, this comes up at one level or another. Um, seeing it all laid out before us like this, um, however, was kind of like having a bucket of ice water poured over my head. And I need to look at these graphs, and I can see where the problem is. I do remember at one time, we had city managers that didn't care about compression. If the chiefs were, were getting to his level, he didn't care, but that, that does seem to be, uh, causing a problem downstream. But I'm also concerned about the lower levels, as somebody else has said, that, um, we've got folks that are working here who, who could possibly, quite easily, maybe be making, uh, better salaries somewhere else. Um, a consultant, I think, is not a bad idea, but we have the problem laid before us. What I'd like to start hearing about is solutions. What can we do, what are recommendations? We do have certain constraints, and, um, it's all wrapped around what city revenues are. What are we bringing in? We've got essentially, as I understand it, um, two major sources of, of revenue. We've got our sales tax revenue, and we've got our, uh, our property tax revenue. So what do we do with that? How can we fix the problem sustainably? Because, okay, we, we may like this past year get, uh, a nice influx of money, but that's going to be months. And we can't commit to paying long-term salaries on one influx of cuts. So that's where I'd like to see a consultant come in and, and focus on solutions to the problem. How can we fund these jobs, these, this salary increases that we'd like to see, and do that sustainably without hurting the city in another part?
Right. No, I, I completely agree, and I know that there are a couple of really good consulting firms that do things just like that. Um, I, I cannot remember the name of it off the top of my head, but there is an agency that looks at finding revenue sources for cities like ours. Um, so we can do some research, and we can maybe put some names together, um, for you guys, or think about doing R S Q, um, if that's what you'd like to do.
Counsel, any further comments?
I think we should do that.
Okay.
And, and bring us more information. I think it's something that needs to move forward, we definitely need to talk about this, and, and see what we can do.
Okay, well, I think then, if you guys are okay with this plan, I will continue working on this, and maybe bring it back to study session next month with either, um, a list of potential consultants and/or some ideas that staff might toss around for, um, a way to sort of work on the situation. Um, independently, we think we can, I don't know, a little bit of the night or both, pretty similar with salaries, but, um, it seems a little, the optics don't seem the best if you're working on your own salaries. So sometimes it's better to have that consultant come in.
And I agree, and I also think that, um, if we are presented with a number of solutions that this is something to work with, we can provide parts of one with another, we can start thinking about it, but right now, we're looking at it, and it's a little bit...
Great, I'm sorry to be the one to pour nothing of it on you.
And no, and that's fine, because when it needs to happen, it needs to happen. Um, that is a problem. Um, you know, when, when you're absolutely got smacked by something, I think, uh, it's, you're going to experience brain freeze for a second, and so to see some options for solutions that'll give us something to work with, and we can start moving ahead.
Okay.
Right now, it's difficult to, to come up with a solution, so. Council members, any further comments on this item? Hearing none, let's move on to the next item. Thank you, Ms. Orne, for all of that, that was a lot of work, and I really appreciate that. All right, coming up, our next item in two years is upcoming council meetings. And this, Oliver, what do you have for us?
I can't see Zoom at this point, so I don't know what's listed. Uh, Jameson, could you let me share it?
Have audio back.
Or maybe Jackie can share it.
I don't know, I'm...
Jackie has shared, so.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I can read down the list, if there's anything you want to comment on, certainly do that, that's worth it.
That, yeah, that'd be fine, I just don't have the list available.
All right, so for February fourteenth, this coming Monday, we have a recognition, the twenty-twenty Outstanding Performance Award, and on our action agenda, our recreation open space plan, which we heard about tonight, and also the city buildings, which we also discussed tonight. And there is one thing that I wanted to add to that as well as presenting a manager's coin. We will do that as well. Uh, February twenty-fourth, the regular meeting is currently going. Something that's all added to that, that you know of.
Um, not at this moment, I'm sure that we'll have some statistic added in the next two weeks, but it seems to get itself self-respect, uh, very quickly.
It does, it does. And there's a number of future items listed here, signs, sign ornaments, uh, depending on my age, I've got to put my glasses on so I can read them clearly. Signs, order, these schedules update, U N. Census, and council redistricting. Uh, S M. C. two dot six two dot zero five zero, class and compensation process clarification, generator service agreements, backup generated for wells. Uh, contracted workers, city hall security cameras, judicial services agreement, municipal court, that expires on twelve thirty-one twenty-one, so we need to work on that. And I A F C B A, which expires twelve thirty-one twenty-one, and teamsters T D. Support twenty-twenty-two waiting to increase, so those things are coming up for us. Now, do you have any other things you'd like to add?
Um, Jameson, do you have one you'd add?
Um, I just wanted to say that for next week, we'll also have awareness rescinding personal policy from the code, and then the corresponding resolution to approve it. Fairly efficient, so we can have that, Jackie.
Very good.
And then, um, also Jackie does an update, the teamsters T D. Support at the very bottom, that one's already done.
And so is the judge contract. And then if I may have just a couple of minutes, I wanted to, uh, let the city council know that I will be leaving the state on Wednesday. I am going to my, um, annual, um, Association of Public Treasurers, uh, board meeting. So I will, um, probably appoint Shane Fisher to be the, um, acting city manager while I'm out of state. I will be back on Sunday. Um, I haven't flown for a while, so it's going to be an adventure.
Well, recently, it's not that dramatic, just keep this thing on the whole time, you're fine, and you'll be fine. All right, we do have one item that needs to be, uh, addressed still. Uh, Ms. Ripley has been unable to become a part of this meeting. Uh, what is council's desire regarding Ms. Ripley? Who is she, or is she excused absence or not?
Can you hear me? She's here. She's been here all the time. That's, she's been here all the time, guys.
Okay, well, when we did the roll, you didn't, uh, you didn't appear, and I apologize to Ms. Ripley for not asking for your feedback. I did not believe you were on, so I, I do sincerely apologize.
I, I got off, and I called back in again, and I don't know if that's when I reconnected, but I have been listening the whole time.
Okay, well, I apologize to Ms. Ripley, and since I have not called on you, is there any item you wish to comment on at this point?
No.
Okay, and again, I, I look forward to that, so. All right, and then one item, counsel, before we adjourn this meeting, um, it is my hope that we can meet in person, um, going forward. Um, in order to do that, we do need to understand that we all are adults, and so if we are feeling ill, uh, the Zoom option's not going away. So, um, if you're not feeling well, please feel free to not show up, um, join us via Zoom. Uh, other folks have health concerns that they need to, uh, take very seriously, and so if you are one of those folks who do not feel bad about using the Zoom option either, I think that we have to make those decisions for ourselves, not for each other. So, um, I, at least, for each meeting that I'm able to... So I, at least, for each meeting that I'm able to attend, will attend that meeting here in council chambers. And I do understand with somebody, whether it's a council member or a staff member, is unable or feels uncomfortable attending, this is a no judgment zone as far as that concern, so you have to make decisions, and we need to respect those. So it is my intention to meet in person. Just if you are able to do that, willing to do that, please join us here. All right, do we have a comment? I thought I heard somebody speaking up. If there's no objection, this meeting is adjourned. Yeah, oh, one, yes, now.
I'm sorry, Elizabeth, did you want to explain the, how to check email?
Oh, yes, I wanted to let everyone know that the email server has been trying to migrate for, oh, a week now, it's been down. But you can get your email through the city's website. So I can run you through how to do it here, or you can call Jackie how to do it. But you basically have a little envelope that is on the main page that's entered with a Facebook sign. Once you get into that, you put in the word Sunny Side, backslash, your first name, your first initial, last name, and then the password for your computer, and you will be able to get into your email. So I'll run that through anyone here if they want detailed directions.
I mean, the meeting's my final day, so hopefully others are able to as well, so.
I've done that a couple of times, it works really well.
So one thing, technology is, is annoying as well as a convenience, but we will model our through it. If you do, it needs to be done. If you do have questions, either call Elizabeth before she leaves on Wednesday, or talk to Jackie. All right, now, without objection, this meeting is adjourned at eight oh three P.M. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you for your patience.